You don't have to tell them, but you can have somebody from the town call them and chat with them if they're willing to chat. And say, yes, well, we had one of these situations six months ago. And when the court, when they, after they got the letter from the court, they decided to do it. Really, really want to think about that.
Right. One of the problems was this gentleman was unreachable. He refused.
Yeah, that's, that can be a problem, yes.
To call us, he refused to accept the letters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I had no, we went to his house and knocked on his door. We did try to reach out to him prior to getting.
Yeah. Yeah, well, someone's going to see your attention.
But your, your objective would be a first offense like that, and you would write him a letter and give him a warning.
Right, which is what we tried to do. And the reason we hung on to it was it was smoke detectors. And that's a real, that's a, that's a sincere issue.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and I did not want to let that go and have a liability rest on the town because here's a housing inspection that has a violation and we didn't pursue it and get it fixed, so.
It's your responsibility and you tell no.
I mean, we were kind of caught one way or the other.
No, no, you do, but you got to resolve.
But out of this noncriminal disposition, then I would have a way to keep it in the town for a long period of time.
I'd just like to also say Wendy did a fantastic job. I mean, she kept me posted throughout the process. You know, should I send these emails to KP because we incur costs? And we said, yep, that's the only choice we have at this point. Um, you know, subsequently, we debriefed on it, like we always should when we have a situation where it doesn't feel right. You know, we have this potential, we did spend a little bit of money. What can we do better? And that's, that's the genesis, like Wendy explained, of why we're here today. And if, if there isn't an appetite, that's fine, but you know, we always talk, we always wanted to see if there's ways we can be better. More efficient from our operations standpoint, but also from a financial standpoint.
Hearing what you said, I would love to have some input from Martha Morrison and maybe I could take an opportunity to contact her. Either tomorrow or the beginning of next week and, and see if she recalls some of the board of health meetings that she was at.
Sure. Why don't you check on it? The, I'm thinking of several things. One, um, in a city of some size where these kinds of things might be weekly rather than every few years. Mechanisms to handle this and, and make the paperwork move more quickly and make it administratively easier and less expensive, absolutely. Um, this is kind of an awkward one-off. And so the urgency, this is not a problem that we're constantly trying to have to solve.
I, I think that our, we had a little bit of concern with that, I think. Uh, I think we were concerned about being a little too heavy-handed with citizens.
And I don't want to be. And I do not like that. I'm somebody who will, I get a trash complaint, I give the person a call. Um, you know, if I don't have a phone number for them, I send them a friendly letter. Hey, did you know you can't have this on the side of the road, you've got to pick it up? And that works very well for ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
It, it's the five percent who are not reachable, unwilling to cooperate. Um, and it's, and we did. I got here, I got the complaint in August. It wasn't filed until, um, after the fair, so October. So in that entire time, I, I had one phone call where he yelled at me and then said he hung up and, and continued to yell at me.
So what would we do? You would, you would change your letter to somebody that has a violation by saying, here's a warning.
So I would start. So I would start with the letter.
Yeah.
I would start with that friendly phone call, trying to reach out to them, go however that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No response.
Yeah.
And really no response. Then, okay, here's, here's a warning and we'll make it official with the letterhead and.
And in that letter, you would say that, you would say that, you give a list of the fines and how that would progress.
Yes, and, and make all kinds of citations and references to state and local.
Reserving the ability to file a criminal complaint should go that far.
Yes. Right, but, but I wouldn't file that criminal complaint until I had a significant amount of, you know, local paperwork generated and, and a fine, so that I could say to the judge, well, we're looking to, you know, have this person fix it and to pay the fines that he's accumulated for that person.
We had an incident in Beverly that was a number of years that spanned, it was similar in our engineering department, where someone had moved dirt around the yard, caused some runoff issues for the neighbor and buried a tree. So just half the tree was sticking up out to the ground. It was really an interesting situation. Tried to work with them, same, very similar situation where the, the, the person who was, uh, we sent, uh, letters. A lot of man, uh, man, woman power, trying to connect with them. Um, basically saying, yeah, 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 I'll take care of it. Never made any, any real effort to do it. Continued to do some of the remove, moving the dirt without getting proper permits. And finally, um, we made a decision to start filing because the engineering department did have the authority to do so. He accumulated enough fines where he finally called us and said, I can't pay these fines. What do I have to do? And I said, do what we asked you to do, you know, twelve months ago. And then, again, he refused to do anything and then we ended up having to do a criminal. So even with the fines, you might end up at the end of the day going to the criminal and with the criminal.
Well, it may not always work.
Right.
You're having a fine.
Right, well, I guess which actually does this pattern and they have a noncriminal disposition and they go through that process. So, but they do end up in court.
We ended up waiving half the fines, by the way, Jeff. So when we get to the court, we settled by waiving the fines. And he had X amount of time to make the, through the court, that was part of the.
But it gives you leverage, number one, and number two, to the extent where it may happen sometimes. If you do collect the fines, it covers some of the time and the tension and energy that it does take to follow up on these things. These are not the normal course of business in town or should not be.
No, and we, I would not expect that. And again, I want to say, I know I and my board have no desire to be heavy-handed. We'd much rather make that phone call, send that friendly letter, um, it, you know.
You'd just like to assert, insert a process between the, let's see if we get them to work with us and the next step is court.
Yes, and, and it is a much gentler way to do this.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense, put it in that context.
Based upon the people not passing it twice, Dick, does this sound like something that would pass with people? What were their primary concerns? Because it sounds like Wendy and her board are very thoughtful and.
The approach, the approach in Topsfield is to determine, yep, tobacco is a problem. Yep, we will pass this with the tobacco and include the following fines with it. Very clear what it is, what you're doing and why they're doing it, and they agree to it. Remember that noncriminal disposition says you are guilty until you prove yourself innocent. The bureaucrat says you're guilty. You have to prove that you're not if you're not going to get fined. That's what it says in many ways. Do you know that I, do you know that I am, not this year, but most winters, am subject to about three thousand dollars worth of fines from the town of Topsfield?
From what?
Half my street is a matter of fact.
For what?
What? Well, we have a bylaw that has noncriminal disposition for depositing snow on a sidewalk in the town of Topsfield. And every year I blow snow and a lot of it goes on the sidewalk. The town does not, by the way, plow the sidewalks in my neighborhood. Nor does anybody in my neighborhood do the sidewalks. But we have a law to that effect and I am subject to that kind of fine because it's every day. And once the snow falls and it's there for a while, it's really, it's pretty hard to get rid of.
I'm going to call the authorities then.
Right, so.
I'm going to call the.
I bet you will, but I only told you because there's, there's no snow, so.
So if I have to actually go forward on that?
The point is, the point is, you need to be very careful with the current noncriminal dispositions. It's not the mode of the town of Topsfield. And granted, Wendy does not want to be heavy-handed, but we don't know who will be here.
Well, we don't know. No, no, I want to hear, I want to hear Wendy's.
So, so I just want to take that example and, and, and draw it out, so. So you have a lovely group move in, um, maybe, you know, a senior citizen, he and his wife have come. She's in a wheelchair and she wants to go walking on the sidewalk, you know, and they push her along. So, but people have been snowblowing. So the option for the town, instead of being heavy-handed, you know, would be to go and greet them.
Remind them.
But then they would have a method, just just send a warning. Everybody gets a, gets a letter and say, please remove the snow, here's your warning, here it is. Just so you're aware, there's a fine schedule that can go on. And it's not, I, and I believe that the town of Topsfield and the people on the boards and the people who are responsible for enforcing the regulations, um, especially if you make sure that, um, because one of the things you have to do in noncriminal disposition is each regulation has to have a, a fee schedule, a finding schedule adopted with it. You would make sure that the first one is warning.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you could do that over, um, for all of them. But you do have that regulation in place for a reason. I'm not sure why you voted on the snow regulation, but you'd be able to, you'd be able to take it, take, take care of it and address it.
I think.
There's still lots of people in the town of Topsfield that would brandish their spears right down to the town hall that wants to find them. I can assure you that I am not the only one. My street isn't the only one. It is not done in the town of Topsfield.
But Dick, if a complaint was made, in this case, it was a public safety complaint. And you could argue that, you know, the sidewalk example and so. If a complaint is made, the town has the choice to change the bylaw and so on. But if it goes from, would you please, would you please, would you please, would you please, we're taking you to court. I think that is a much steeper wall to hit and much less kind than sort of putting a little bit of a reminder and so.
But this is, there's not a law that I have to do my sidewalk. We don't shovel our sidewalks.
There's not.
Not, not in Topsfield.
I thought you said there was a bylaw.
Excuse me?
I thought you said there was a bylaw saying you had to shovel the sidewalk.
You can't, no, you didn't listen, see.
You can't put it on public.
I said, I said it on your side, oh, I get it.
He, he, he can't deposit it on the.
Oh, how interesting.
Or in the street, so, so.
See, it's very easy to misinterpret.
So that was a little sloppiness in that law.
So I, I really have to then, because I can see. I will submit to you that there was, uh, less than a five percent chance that sending fines of twenty-five dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever, was going to get that owner to move. You could not contact that owner. It required the force of legal threat to get him to respond, at which point he responded.
Well, we did see that our signed bylaw violation schedule was effective.
Is different. The difference is, it's to a business. And a business says, ooh, if they don't hike it, I'm going to have to pay, or I'm going to be out of business. And by the way, business is how I keep my, my food on the table.
It's the same fines in a, in a, in a, in a.
This is worded wrong.
It's, it's really, it's, it's really not the same.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see.
When you're dealing with a business versus trying to deal with a.
This is a business too.
But if it's an.
Your label, that's your business.
That's a business.
It's a business.
This is a business.
Thank you.
It can, it can be a business and, yes, it could, it could very well be a business.
Um, listen, what I would like to do right now, because I'm concerned, uh, we have a.
Five thirty.
Thank you, Wendy.
Wendy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, appreciate the explanation.
Thank you.
Let's think about this some. My bias, but let's bring this up again, um, is that let the town decide. They can knock it down again and if they so choose, so be the will of the people. But I'm not necessarily against doing it.
I could be convinced, I could be convinced to do that as well.
One of the things we have done, I think, less than ideally, and, uh, Kevin, I'm going to put this on you a little bit. I think we need to include clearer explanations for the rationale, um, on a lot of articles. Oftentimes what happens is we get, FinCom, uh, you know, presents the article and their recommendation. They're not experts on it. And one of the things that, uh, I do want to talk with you about is how we can put a little more explanation about some of these things.
The way, the way he does things, I'm sure he's going to have a lot of description on that.
Well, we should, but the mechanism for doing it in ATM, people come to ATM and that's all they see. And oftentimes you get your explanation on those little sheets of flyers as you walk in the door. But people vote on things they don't really understand based upon the FinCom's recommendation. I think some things we deserve to have more, more background on, um, you know, John, I think.
You know that every article has an explanation section, right?
It needs to be done carefully, yeah.
The one, the, the, uh, recommendation by the FinCom and the explanation.
I know, I don't always feel those are completely adequate, but let's.
But yes, so, so let's write them better. I'm looking. But the mechanism, the, the mechanism is there.
Okay, I'll, I'll grant you that, yeah.
If the discussion continues on town meeting floor, any one of us can get up and address the issue.
I opened a rat's nest. I'd like to close it because I need to move on right here. Um, I want to look at the agenda right here. First, on this one, which is technically, we're still on the, uh, the town meeting warrant review. Um, so I think we need to have more conversation on, uh, the first one. Um, there was some question about that. I think, I know you in particular were concerned about what's going, that going to look like on top of the other things we have much less control over. I want to talk about rationale for the, um, commissioners. Um, select board, we sound have agreed, that's in there, that's good. Town administrator, adopter, adoption, housekeeping, um, Kevin, just a little bit more clarity. I understand.
I need to see the language.
Yeah, that's it. So I'd like a rationale on that, so we'll come back to that. Solar development pilot, are we sort of agreed, just go on that? There's no.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, this is the time to do it.
That's when we get some money, yeah.
I think so.
Rescind debt for, Beth, that one is definitely a go. Um, um, that, that, that one's all set. Um, address standardization.
It's not set because we want to make sure we know what's in there.
We got to know what it's in, but once we know what's in there, we're not disagreeing that it's worth putting on there. The address standardization, we want to get some more information, which is really a cost and extent.
Um, did we? Is that what we said for that one?
I think that was a go.
I think that was a go.
That's a go?
I have the language. It's, it's, uh.
I think that's a go.
Okay.
And I could share more detail.
No, that's great.
Prepare it.
So I'm going to call that a go. I realize some of these may need more explanation for clarification, but, um, I think we're good on that, so. Um, adoption of the veteran exemption, um, I think it's a go, people can vote, um.
I was just going to clarify.
I think.
I think some clarification necessary.
Excuse me, at some point, we're going to vote individually on each one of these things we're going to want.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm just trying to get clear what our list is.
Yes, yeah.
And this is as much to be clear, which ones are going to be a whether or not, and which ones are, we need more explanation. Um, community septic management program, that we think is a go, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think so. Um, noncriminal enforcement, we've all kind of agreed on that one piece.
On the septic one, I think though, we do want to be able to answer the question, does, how much does this cost the town to do it? That's going to be something that we should be able to answer all the time.
Yeah, because we, we talked about it being the treasurer and the accountant.
And you're going to pay, you're going to owe the loan.
Hours and.
If you take money out of that two hundred thousand dollar fund, you're going to pay.
To be able to explain that.
Yeah.
Well, I have an org chart that basically explains and I, I, I try. It's been two hours. I didn't want to get too much in the mix at this point.
No, I think the fact that it is money that the town doesn't have to put out itself, other than some administrative oversight.
But you know, that's the creep that you're talking about, the administrative creep. That with every new service that we provide is a little bit more, and this year we're starting to see it. We've got a couple of hours here, there, we've got like four departments, we're asking for more hours because of the things that they're doing. So as we add to the plate, that adds to the hours, so.
And I'd like to point out that we don't even have to touch this if we approve it, if everything's copacetic. It's only that situation if somebody says, we say, you need to fix this, and they say, I can't because I can't afford it. This is a mechanism that is not town money that allows them to go and do it.
Yeah, but this isn't just us saying you have to do this. This is people coming to us saying, it failed, I don't have money, can I borrow from you? And there could be ten.
And we can charge them, we can charge them extra percent.
Uh, we could. I, I think just understanding what's involved.
Well, I think it's understanding, but I think.
Because of the administrative creep that just naturally happens.
A version of this, I think, is going to go on the article and the warrant, you think?
Conceptually, I think it should go there.
A version, we may want to talk about more detail and so on. Um, the, uh, criminal enforcement, uh, the, and so on and so forth, we've pretty much agreed on it. It's going to go in some form, there's a little tuning, right?
I think so.
Um, exotic animals, bylaw, ditto on that one.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're in agreement that we will have something on there. Ground mounted solar photic, uh, photovoltaic installations, we'll probably go on that. We need clarification, look at it and see and so on.
But basically, that's a call on the planning board.
That's a planning board call.
Well, we can still, we could, we, we could reject it, but I'm, I can imagine that we would.
We'll probably do it, yeah.
But the only point is if they make a change to it and say, yeah, we decided we can't do that in time or there's too much, um.
It doesn't affect anyone's ability to get, have solar here in Topsfield or our ability to prevent it or accept it. It's just a technical issue to the process of time.
That's right. That's right.
Yep, okay. Um, and then.
If anyone wants to pull it, they can.
Yeah. The medical marijuana one is coming off anyway, not necessary.
Assigned regulations.
Um, assigned regulation, oh, sorry, assigned regulations.
That's a reward, that's okay.
It's placeholder, that's okay. And again, a little more detail and clarity. And then the abandoned pump and so on seems to be worthwhile. I think that's a safety issue and.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. I think Kevin's looking at that because he thinks we might be able to do it in-house.
We still need some money in-house, whether we need twenty-five thousand.
I'm going to put a check mark there because you've got to.
I have one, I'm working hard on it. I just need to get that.
I'd like to leave the placeholder on the name of something's going to happen. If you say we're withdrawing this or for.
I'll sex it out and do that.
Even if it appeared, it could be presented by the FinCom as other funds have been found to do this in-house. We would, we'd like to remove this. We can do it even after publication if necessary. But putting something there, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, so there's some things that we need to continue talking about. We'll work on a time to get together and do that.
I'm going to just flag this. This is emails that had taken place today, so I didn't add it to this list because I didn't have enough backup. But I just want to put it out there. There was a five-year contract in two thousand and six that was signed with the schools for buses. We looked back, a very quick look to see if we had any of the existing language that allowed for the five-year contract. Because after three years, um, you need the approval for a contract of that length. Um, at this point, we haven't found it. Middleton did a search as well because it's the union. And they did not find it in their warrant either. So five years looks like it's coming up and that's why they're asking the question, because they just want to continue what was already adopted. If we haven't in fact adopted that for that five-year contract that was done, um, then we're going to have to put something in here, uh, around that potentially. But this is the first time the schools has raised, ever raised this, that this might be something we need to consider. So I don't have much backup, other than that, but I just wanted to put that on the list.
So it was two thousand and six and every five years, so that would go to.
It's a five-year contract.
Two thousand and eleven, and then it would go to two thousand and sixteen.
Twenty twenty-one.
And then twenty twenty-one.
And it was just raised today.
Okay.
And you negotiated in twenty twenty to a services beginning in twenty-one.
So we're going to make sure if we don't, if it doesn't exist, it will in this one.
So you're saying it might show up on the list.
You might see something the next time we sit down.
Is that being negotiated then and potentially new rates in twenty twenty-one?
I did not have time to make a phone call. It was just a simple question. Do you have it? I looked, we did, and I said, well, I said, are you looking, I emailed back, are you looking to do a new contract? Looking at the map, I said, it's likely, and I, and then I didn't hear back from you.
Next time, we'll talk about that. You open the can of worms and close it up.
It looks to me like we're going to skip the economic development.
We are not. That's quick.
Now, what I want to do is I want to talk with Kevin about the charge.
We skip it again.
I want to talk about the charge, um, because we hadn't had a chance to do that.
Yeah.
Um.
You're going to read it?
I, I can read that.
John, if you want, I can just, really quick, I have, John, I've been working on it, um, of course, like we've, um, worked around, uh, economic community development committee. Um, it's something that, um, would be, uh, a new board of commission that's around just that. The details are in here. If the chair thinks it's appropriate, I know we've gone back and forth with some drafts.
Because they're online, you can see them.
I would like to.
They're, oh, it's in board docs, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh, I haven't checked my.
So I'd like to, I'd like to defer to talk about this more. I think this is fine. I have a couple s- minor questions of the way it's put together here.
Sure.
Um, there's a specification for seven members and list, it could be, it would be nine.
Yeah, I had that too, that we had said seven.
Might be, um, a minimum seven, uh, maximum nine or something like that.
Did we want to go up? Is there a reason why we're putting it at nine?
We might in sometime in the future have good people we want to bring on without getting rid of somebody that gives the ability to add, but does not require. And number under A one, two, three, that indicates there are certain constituencies that will be part of that seven.
Um, I thought the wording, just a slight redundancy in the middle a little bit, I would merge those sentences. Uh, there are two sentences here that say, let's see, the mission is to enhance the town's economic infrastructure by facilitating blah, blah, blah. And then the next one says, the committee shall advise them on strategic planning. And then in order to ensure the economic development goals are achieved, the EDC will advise. So those two advising statements could be combined. Because you have a whole sentence there and then another one, in order to ensure they will advise. So it's like, well, the whole thing is to ensure economic development goals are achieved. So they shall advise on implementation of strategic planning, development, implementation of specific economic development programs, support development, you know, it's just.
Can I offer a thought?
It's broken up.
Could you just kind of push those together? I know Kevin's been looking at these a long time.
Sure.
And get sometimes a little zingy zingy with, about the stuff.
Yeah.
If you would do that, put that out to all of us to look at, no action, just so to say, next time we get together, we'll rubber stamp it.
Is this, now, we had said that we were going to appoint these people on Monday night's meeting.
Yes.
Has that pushed out again? Because today's Thursday.
I think what we would do is, if you could send it out and with a request, just Lynn's version, say, um, with a request that, um, and also the list of who, um, Kevin. Um, and if there's disagreement on the charter, then we may have to pull it. But if we, if nobody contacts one-on-one, not a reply, all saying, I have a question, then we could go forward and begin by approving the charter.
Just from a conceptual point of view, because literally I'm just merging sentences, so it's not redundant. I'm not changing the content at all. Does anyone have any, um, concerns or disagree?
I would put minimum seven, uh, maximum nine members.
Okay. Is there any timing in here? How long have these people appointed for?
Over one year. Um, I might have to take annually, four members a community appoint annually, but.
And they can be reappointed and they'll be looked at and so on and so forth.
Okay, so that would be something we'll add in there.
The one thing I was going to, and.
And that would be an official committee that keeps minutes and posts the meetings and all that stuff.
The meetings will be public, that probably needs to be in here as an understanding. The other thing is that I would like to have it, um, be a, basically, again, not trying to accrue power, but, um, a selectman's committee that reports back regularly to the selectman, the board. Because, um, we're committed, we're the elected body, we're appointing these people. If they do comes to us, you don't like what we are encouraging them to do, then you vote us out. You don't have direct hand.
Yeah, it doesn't mention here how often they get together or that report regularly back to the board. What does that actually entail? Because the people, the, the four folks that we identified, in addition to John, myself and Kevin, probably want to know that kind of a commitment too. So is this a group that gets together monthly?
Are we doing this too soon? Do we need to go one more meeting and just get this cleaned up?
I did not put it on the agenda for Monday to be, at this point, just because.
Then we have to call them again.
Call all people.
Lynn, you and I will take your.
Are they anticipating being at this Monday?
Yes.
But we will, we'll make adjustments.
I mean, we can fine tune this. If they're fine with not knowing the exact timeframe, you don't have to specify in the charter how often they meet. As long as they understand what's involved.
This is the guide their efforts. It, it, I think there's something you said too about having a little bit of flexibility within it. So it's not as prescriptive, because if there's, well, we, this is the wording and edited version of what Beverly did. This is their, what they had, and it worked very well. And they met sometimes, maybe a couple times a month, if there were certain things, like a tip that was coming up that they wanted to review with them. Sometimes they might have gone a couple months, they might have taken a couple months of the summer off, couldn't get enough people to it. It really was a, uh, flexible tool, didn't prescribe, we had no offer.
How many people have you already talked to, Lynn?
Um, we have the four lined up that we thought would be good folks.
From the community?
From the community. Heidi Fox, Sarah Guido, who's also the president of the nonprofit that's supporting downtown. Um, Zilly Boujou.
Yeah.
And Josh Round.
Okay.
So it would be seven.
Okay.
Um, we didn't want to make it too big, so it's difficult to schedule.
So you got those four.
All four on board.
And three more of what?
John, me, Kevin.
Okay.
Yep. And the, the goal on this is, this board doesn't take action without the select boards.
They're advising.
They're advising, so everything comes back up to this. I'm concerned about time, Kevin. Um, can we put off the minutes to another time and can we put off Town Beach?
Well, can we just wrap up on this? Um, so are we not doing it on the twenty-fourth?
I want to rewrite this.
Um.
You don't want to clean it up?
I don't mind turning it around and putting it out to everybody and saying, if this is okay, we can approve it on Monday.
Okay.
But I, I, I think it should be a charter. I think the, the mission should come at the beginning, just minor stuff, content's great. I want to reorganize it.
That's fine. We have the big meeting, the big readout to the whole community on March twenty-fifth, which is coming up right around the corner. And we want to get these guys appointed.
So let's, I want you to do it Monday. I'll, I'll secure this.
We could do it the ninth as well. We have another meeting on the ninth. So if you want a little more time to fine-tune it, we could do the appointments on the ninth. That would still be this time to meet with the group after they're appointed and have some discussion so that they could participate in this meeting.
I guess the question is, is the board, those of us here, are we okay, basically entrusting myself and Lynn with some support of Kevin, to take this content, maybe a little bit of format change? No change in intent or overall scope? Do that, get it ready and present it as what we, we'll share it in advance as part of board docs. But it will be available for us to vote on the charter and then vote your members in. That make sense?
I, I, that, that's second sentence in B. I mean, the mission is to enhance the town by facilitating investments that build capacity, create job. So, that, that charter is to facilitate investments.
Dick, I'm gonna suggest we hold this off. It's not gonna happen right now. I'm concerned Kevin has an open...
You've got a five-thirty meeting.
A Capitol meeting that began five minutes ago. This is the public...
That is all now the board.
Yes.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't want to...
Yeah, let's notice the ninth, we'll call folks.
We'll put it to the ninth, we'll, we'll put it to the ninth. If we're gonna have a conversation, we have a conversation. And we're okay putting off the Town Beach Association?
That's actually something we went to contract with, that we just, it's a technical motion and approval. We can do that very quickly.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Yeah, we had one last time. I made a motion and boy, do it seconded.
So, who's gonna make the motion?
Let us, yeah, let's just make the motion right now.
Again, okay. Let's turn that orders. Okay, motion to approve the purchase of a floating walkway from FWM docks and EZ Dock out of Hudson, New Hampshire to be located at Hood Pond in Topsfield, Mass. with funds awarded by a DCR grant.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Would you convey that, please, to, to Debbie?